This forum will be posted on our website, on our social media pages, and in the Illinois Voter Guide at illinoisvoterguide.org. The Nonpartisan League of Women Voters stands firm in our commitment to empower voters and defend democracy. Our commitment to these principles is honored through the sponsorship of programs such as this forum, and the creation of the Illinois Voter Guide, a nonpartisan compilation of candidates in all Illinois races, and our support for voter registration and education programs on a variety of topics throughout the year. The League has been engaging in this work for more than 100 years. We value equity and inclusion in principle and practice, and our members include people of all genders, races, religions, political parties, and ages. We believe that the opportunity to meet and question candidates for office is of paramount importance. We are very fortunate to be assisted by a very experienced moderator for today's forum. In keeping with our practice, our moderator is neither a Lake County resident nor a Lake County voter. Jan Doerner is currently co-president of the Elmhurst League of Women Voters. She's also a vice president of our State League Board, and has been moderating lead debates and forums for nearly two decades. Jan will introduce the candidates and explain the rules of the forum for us. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Lori. Welcome to the candidate forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area. Again, my name is Jan Doerner. Questions for this forum have been collected from League and community members before this forum and were screened for duplication, clarity, and appropriateness to the office of school board member. This forum is between the eight candidates seeking four open positions for Lake Forest High School District 115 School Board. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum and have not been provided the questions before this forum. I would specifically like to highlight that no portion of voice or image recording or other duplication of the forum may be used by any candidate's representative or campaign or in any advertising for or against a candidate or issue. Each candidate will present a 90-second introductory statement. The order to start is alphabetical. Then questions will be asked, and each candidate will have up to one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements will be 90 seconds in reverse order of opening statements. An LWV member will keep time, and candidates, I'm asking you to adhere to the time limits. Candidates, please turn your cameras on. And notice that the timer, when you see the times up sign, you may finish your sentence. So our candidates for this forum are David Burns, Sally Davis, Jeff Giannelli, Amy Marsh, Joanna Marshall, Ted Mormon, Marcus Schaubacher, and John Benson. So once we get all the candidates up, we can start with opening statements. David Burns is up, so David Burns, would you please start with your opening statement?
Yes, my pleasure. Thank you very much. Yeah, my name is David Burns. I am married with three kids, two of which, which are in Lake Forest High School, and one in Lake Bluff Middle School. I've lived in Lake, or we've lived in the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff community for over 20 years. And I went to Northwestern and received my bachelor's and master's degrees in mechanical engineering. After a few years in work, I went back and got my master's in business administration, also at Northwestern. In the corporate world, I've had leadership positions in engineering, marketing, operations, and finally led a business unit while we lived in Germany for two years. That's when we had our first daughter, and that's when we, as a family, decided that it'd be good that I become a stay-at-home, part-time stay-at-home dad. Since then, I've worked as a part-time consultant at AbbVie, co-founded Lake Bluff Brewing Company, and taught two classes at Northwestern University as an adjunct professor. I really feel it's important to serve the community. I'm on, currently on my second term in the planning, Lake Bluff Planning Commission Zoting Board of Appeals. I've served on a nonprofit board in North Chicago, serving homeless vets for five years. And I'm currently the assistant scoutmaster and outdoor chair for Boy Scout Truth 42. I really want to be on this board because I highly, highly value education. It's had a huge impact on my life, and I want to make sure that our kids have the same resources and available to be the best people they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Davis, would you please give your opening statement, 90 seconds max?
Thanks to the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates, and everybody who's joining us today. It's clear that, as always, we are deeply invested in our students' success and in their bright future. I'm Sally Davis. I've lived in Lake Bluff since 2004. I'm the mom of a Lake Forest graduate who is currently in college in California, in my basement. And I have been on the board since 2015. I'm a lawyer at SC Johnson, and since I joined the board in 2015, I am now the board District 115 Vice President and Chair of Finance and Operations. I'm running for the second time because I'm so excited to continue to building on the extraordinary achievements we've made in recent years, and to give all of our students the tools and the support that they need to succeed in high school and beyond, especially in the post-pandemic world. Since the board hired our Lake County Principal of the Year, Dr. Shayla Holland, in 2015, Lake Forest has said yes to every student's potential. We've more than doubled the number of students taking honors and AP classes without any drop-off in their passing rate, making us a college board honorary district. We've passed, posted the highest-ever school-wide ACT score, and we've done it while maintaining the lowest tax rate in Lake County and a rare AAA bond rating. I'm not ignoring or minimizing in any way the awful year that all of us, including our students, have had with coronavirus and the lockdown. I want to talk to you about the actions we've taken and we will continue to take to support our students as they return to full in-person instruction for the remainder of this year and beyond. I'm really looking forward to having a substantial and no doubt spirited discussion of our important issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Giannelli, your opening statement?
There we go. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate the invitation to be here with you today. My name is Jeff Giannelli. My wife Amy and I moved to Lake Forest 16 years ago. We have five children, three of which have already graduated through Lake Forest High School, and have moved on successfully. We currently have two children, Alisa, who is a senior, and Anthony, who's a sophomore at the high school. After receiving my undergraduate degree, I went on to earn an MBA, and I entered into the manufacturing industry. Today, I'm the president and chief operating officer of a privately-held, US-based industrial manufacturing group serving multiple markets throughout North America. I'm running because of the core of who I am, I believe we need to get back. I've done this my whole life. I've served on the advisory board for the Brennan School of Business at Dominican University. I've been the chairman of SAC, the School Advisory Council, for the School of St. Mary's. I have sat on the Lake Forest High School Education Committee. I have been on the Parish Finance Council for the Church of St. Mary, and I'm currently on the school board for SMA in Chicago. I hope that with my background, I can offer a simple, practical, no-nonsense approach to help move the school forward for our kids. I look forward to working with all the board members and the administration and the community to put the kids first, ensure our kids are getting an exemplary education, and represent the community being mindful of how our tax dollars are invested, and to provide clear and transparency into all aspects of Lake Forest High School. I've written letters, met with the board, talked to the administration, and I believe it's time to sit on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next opening statement comes from Amy Marsh.
Hi. First of all, thank you so much for having me. My name is Amy Marsh. I am currently living in Lake Bluff. I've lived here for the past 15 years with my husband and our four children. I did grow up in Lake Forest. I graduated from Lake Forest High School. We picked to move back to these towns because of Lake Forest High School. So we're very excited that our oldest is now a freshman there. We have three other children, a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a first grader, all who attend Lake Bluff Public Schools. I was a former teacher. I used to teach at Everett in West Lake Forest. After that, after my oldest was born, I went on to teach preschool at First Presbyterian Church Preschool. I taught there until our third child was born. Then I kind of switched roles, and I became more of an active parent. I sat on that board as a parent, as a teacher, as the president. And now that my youngest, when he went to kindergarten last year, I started working with Reading Power, volunteering, tutoring first and second graders, going to a preschool in Waukegan and just reading with them. I am running because I absolutely believe that Lake Bluff needs a representative on this board as a bridge between the two districts. We need to ensure that our Lake Bluff students are equally prepared for Lake Forest High School. It is time for all of us to work together for the better of the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Marsh, you're next. I'm sorry, Marshall. You're on mute.
Hello, and thank you very much to the Women's League of Voters for giving us this platform today. I'm Joanna Marshall, and I am running for 115 Board. Lake Forest is where my heart is. It's where I grew up. It's where I went to school, and it set the foundation for who I am today. And I'm really very grateful to this town. I'm a graduate of Everett, DPM, LFHS, and Northwestern University. And I now am a full-time working mom of four kids. I have Madeline, who's a sophomore at Northwestern, Jack, who's a junior at Lake Forest High School, and two girls, Evelyn and Cecilia, that are at DPM. As I saw my kids move through the school system, I began asking a lot of questions. And then I discovered a lot of other members in the communities were asking the same questions as well. And that's what brought me to where I am today, running for the school board. As for my career, I've risen to be one of the top female executives for Berry Global, which is a $14 billion packaging company. I've led teams that have created immense growth and innovation resulting in over $8 billion worth of sales. And I handle some of the largest consumer brand companies in the world. My job is really demanding. I require a strong sense of leadership, collaboration, teamwork, and problem-solving skills. If I'm not driving cost savings or handling quality issues or developing innovative and sustainable packaging, I'm working on my negotiation skills. And also, most importantly, I'm listening to the voice of the customer. And right now, my customer is the community of Lake Forest. And it's all these skills that I have right now that I think would make me an excellent member for the Board of Education. Three things that I think we need to do and do okay, thank you.
Ted Mormon, could you give us your opening statement?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum today. I am Robert Ted Mormon. People have asked why my middle name is often seen in quotes. It is because the county recommended it, as my given name is Robert Theodore Mormon, and I've always used the nickname Ted. I've lived in Lake Forest forever, graduating from Lake Forest High School in 1977. I live with my wife Susan and have two grown children, all of whom attended Lake Forest High as well. I'm currently the secretary of the board of Lake Forest High School. I've served on the board for the past seven years. People have often likened me, or likened to me as the fiscal conscience of the board. Others would just call me Scrooge. Having said that, we as a board do provide our students and the high school with all the funding necessary to be successful. We are one of the highest-funded schools in the state with over $25,000 annual funding provided per student. I was successful in convincing the board to switch from our longtime funding policy of just asking for the max each year to only asking for half this year. I actually advocated for no increase at all in our property tax levy. Over 26% of your property tax bill goes directly to Lake Forest High School. We have the responsibility to treat your taxes reverently and only ask for what we need to provide the outstanding education that our students do receive. In this era of coronavirus, I've also been children back in school earlier rather than later.
Thank you. Next opening statement is from Marcus Schaubacher.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much to our host for organizing this event and to all of you for your interest today. Most of all, I'm a proud dad of two young men, Jokum and Joska, who are both at the high school, sophomore and a senior. I'm a committed husband and an enthusiastic citizen of our beautiful town of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. Our family came to Chicago area about 10 years ago and chose to live in Lake Forest because of the great school system and, of course, its natural beauty. I grew up in Germany, as you probably can hear on my accent. I'm a physician by training, and I spent 10 years in clinical practice in Germany and South Africa. Then I joined the healthcare industry, which brought us to the US 20 years ago, and eventually here to Lake Forest. Currently, I'm the CEO and president of ECRI, a non-for-profit organization focused on advancing the evidence-based and effective healthcare globally. And we were at the forefront of fighting the pandemic through the support of our healthcare workers and healthcare organizations. I serve on three company boards, and I'm affiliated Associate Professor at the Strick School of Medicine in Chicago. I'm truly excited to be here today, chosen by your elected representatives, the caucus, to represent all stakeholders in this community as a candidate for the board. It's truly an honor, and I'm humbled by the trust you have in me. What I will bring to the board is an open, unbiased mind, an analytical approach to understand the facts, business acumen, to use your tax dollars wisely, and a proven track record of guiding management teams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next opening statement is from John Benson.
Thank you. I'm John Benson. I've been a president of Lake Forest for over 30 years. I have two children who went through the high school, and I have three grandchildren, one of whom will be starting first grade. Professionally, I'm a podiatrist by training. However, I have held several educational leadership positions throughout my career, including 10 years as dean of the California School of Podiatric Medicine in Oakland, California. I'm very excited about having the opportunity to serve this community with my experience as a member of District 115. Last week, we got some great news when the school board announced that a reasonable return to in-person learning would occur on April 5th. And while some people like to focus on problems that need to be fixed, I prefer to look for opportunities. Opportunities like successfully onboarding a new superintendent, like investing the funds and resources necessary to support student success, like engaging transparently and honestly with the community, like working with Dr. Holland, faculty and staff, to further the acclaimed work that had been done, and working with all stakeholders to determine the best path forward for shared services, excuse me. Our schools have a history of providing excellent education. It was a primary reason for our choosing Lake Forest more than 30 years ago, and I look forward to building on that foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving to questions now, and remember that our question, our limit, our time limit for questions is one minute. Sally Davis, what are your top three priorities, and how will you accomplish them?
Thanks. My top three priorities are to spend the rest of this year helping our students finish strong. Now that they have been told that they are returning to full in-person learning for everyone who wants to be there, and that 83% of our teachers are returning to the building, we have to normalize and heal so that we can finish strong, launch our seniors into the world, and help the rest of our kids reignite their passion for being at Lake Forest High School. In addition, we have a lot of opportunity to make capital improvements to our buildings. We know that, and the pandemic has taught us some things that we didn't know when we started the Master Facilities Plan. We will need to focus on how we want to configure the building so that it is pandemic-safe, but also helps our kids launch into the 21st century. And then lastly, we are going to be seating a new superintendent, and we have to make sure that that superintendent is connected to this community, reflects our values, and is able to do the important work that we have ahead of us.
Thank you. Jeff Giannelli, what are your top three priorities, and how will you accomplish them?
Thank you very much. That's a pretty simple question, to be very honest. Coming out of COVID, my number-one priority is the students. We met with a group of students, and I continue to talk to them. I'm impressed by how resilient they are. But they're struggling academically and socially and emotionally, and that really has to be priority number one. We've got to make sure we tend to their needs, and we get them back on track so that they can be successful as they move forward. The second priority for me, we need to work collaboratively with all the stakeholders, the teachers, the administrators, Dr. Holland, the board, and make sure that we move forward. And lastly, with respect to the cost of moving forward and the facilities we have, we want to advise, invest wisely. But I want to make sure that we stop the tax and spend approach that we've had in Lake Forest. I want to make sure we're respectful of the community's tax dollars, and we can do it by looking at our costs. My background's in manufacturing. You have to look at all your costs. You have to make sure you've got efficiencies in all the operations. And I believe there's efficiencies at Lake Forest High School that we can drive without increasing tax dollars and bringing world-class facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Marsh, same question?
So my biggest priority is obviously the children. I think that the students coming into the building is really just step one. I think we have such an uphill battle with them in terms of we need to support them. We all need to work together, put aside our differences, and lead by example. These children are not the same that walked out of that building last March. They are walking in with a whole new set of issues of academic and social and emotional, and they need us, and they need our support. And we need to work together to figure out how we can help them the best. I also fully believe we need to be transparent for our community, for our fiscal spending, for their responsibility. I think Lake Bluff needs a bridge, a connection, a stronger communication between the two districts so that the kids that come into the school next year as freshmen from Lake Bluff are equally prepared as those that come in from Lake Forest, from Deer Path, from the other neighboring schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Marshall, your top three priorities?
Obviously, the number one without a doubt is students, and getting the students back safe, getting them back as soon as possible, and having them stay there. And that means making sure that they go back in the fall, five days a week, 100% of the time. Getting them acclimated, getting them adjusted, and getting them back to sports and listening to those students. These students don't have a voice right now. We spent some time with them last week, and you would be absolutely so sad if you heard how they feel like nobody is fighting for them right now. Students first. Second, fiscal responsibility, okay? No more tax increases. We, I've spent a career on cost savings, a career on cost savings. I think that we have plenty of money right now to do what we need to do in this community and grow the schools and make them academically superior. I also want transparency, and a three-legged stool needs to operate in this town. You have to have the administration, the teachers, and the community all together. You can't have one leg missing, or the stool won't stand. Those are my three priorities.
Thank you. Ted Mormon, your three priorities?
Well, as everyone has said, obviously, number one is returning our students to school, and it has been over a year. And, you know, we have a lot of you know, space to catch up on, and we can do it. And, you know, we might even have to extend the school year, but, you know, we can only do it with the administration, the staff, and the community all working together. Number two, onboarding a new superintendent. Sally and I have both been interviewing prospective candidates over the last few days, and it's pretty exciting. And I think the community is going to be happy. We'll find out. Also, maintaining a fiscally responsible operation that provides the outstanding education in a prudent manner while also maintaining our AAA bond rating and respecting the taxpayers of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Millwood.
Thank you. Marcus Schaubacher, same question?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to mention that our kids have been back to school and want to really compliment the current administration for being the first school in public school here in this area to do this as early as October last year. So getting them full-time back and making sure that they stay there safely and that they have a positive education experience, social experience, emotional experience is the number one priority without question. Secondly, and that was mentioned before, is, you know, we as a board have one employee, one employee only, and that's our superintendent. So bringing on the right person and then helping that person to onboard very quickly and effectively is a key issue because they stepping into a very complex situation. And then thirdly, while we need to remain fiscally responsible, I think we need to address the fact that our world has changed, and we need to adapt our curriculum to prepare these kids for a changed, post-pandemic world in which they need to function and be successful in their careers and their adult lives.
Thank you. John Benson?
Thank you. I agree with Marcus completely. My first priority will be to learn as quickly as possible, get up to speed with the workings of the school board so that I can be a valued member of that school board. Beyond that, I think that the guiding principle for everything that I would be concerned about would be to be sure that we keep student success at the forefront of everything we do so that the students receive an experience that they deserve and that this community expects them to receive. And that covers the entire gamut of fiscal, strategic planning, physical plant, faculty and staff, and administration.
Thank you. David Burns, same question?
Sure. I think, you know, obviously, getting our kids back in school full-time, five days a week for all the students is the number-one priority. We've made amazing progress, being one of the first to offer hybrid learning in the fall. And now, as we've learned, we will be going back into five-day in April. So I think we've done great progress, but we need to continue working on this to get everybody back in through mitigating factors because we don't need the disruption of having an outbreak and having to close a school down. Number two, transparency. I see this as a big issue. I don't think there's any mal-intent, but we need to do a better job of making information readily available, and most importantly, making it consumable and understandable. We don't really do a good job of putting our strategy out there in terms of what it means for our policies, our curriculum, how we use our resources. So we need to do a better job there. And then finally, we do need to focus on our Master Facilities Plan. I'll look at that strategically deliberately. We can't do everything. So we got to engage the community, reassess it, and put a plan together.
Thank you. Jeff Giannelli, what short and long-term action will you support to lessen the financial impact of the pandemic?
Well, I appreciate the question, and really, you know, several of our running mates here have talked about the pandemic, and the pandemic has been real. Short-term, we have to put our resources behind educating and making sure we make up the education the kids have lost. We have to make sure that their emotional needs are met. We have to make sure that academically, we can do it. Lake Forest High School is on firm footing financially. We have the resources to move forward. So short-term, for me, it's about the kids. It's about making sure that we give them what we need. Long-term, as I've talked about already, and as has been mentioned, we need to look at our current expenses. We need to find where we can be cost-conscious and how we can redeploy those dollars to be effective. We have to continue, certainly, to invest in our facilities, but we have to do it in a fashion that we don't go into the taxpayers' pockets to do it, but we do it respectfully. So long-term, we want to look at all aspects, all costs in the school, all costs in the operation. Again, I have a very practical background. And to John's point, we want to learn to work together, but there's low-lying fruit that we can harvest for the long-term investments.
Amy Marsh, same question?
So obviously, the kids come first. The students come first. I believe as a former teacher, I can assure you that you do not need to spend money in order to make improvements, in order to help the students, in order to come up with new programs, to help the kids. I think we need to put their academics. I know we need to help catch up. There have been schools all around the country. There have been schools just down the street from us that have been open all year. Socially, emotionally, these kids need our help. They told us last Wednesday that's their biggest thing, was their social and emotional health. And we, as a community, we as educators, we as parents, have to work together to help these kids. These are, this is our future. We've all had our high school career. These kids have not. So for those seniors that are going to walk into that building in April, this is it for them. They've had no prom. They've had nothing. We have to help make this end of the year great for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Marshall, your your short and long-term action to support lessening the financial impact of the pandemic?
You know, I think short, well, you know, if we maintain fiscal responsibility, and again, we've got incredible means here in the town of Lake Forest and great resources, that I think that we can continue to, you know, look within our community and look within our financial aspects that we have right now and be able to make it through the situation, you know, that we have right now. So, you know, I think we're going to be just fine.
Ted Mormon, same question?
Yeah, I think short and long-term, we've already invested in the short-term aspect. We put mitigations in place with the proper PPE gear. I think having the students in five days a week isn't going to be that much more expensive. We've already made the investment. We still have a solid AAA bond rating with money in the bank. And actually, you kind of save money when your lights are turned off. And actually, you kind of save money when your, your lights are turned off and very few people are in the school. And while we have had limited classes, we haven't had a lot. And to, you know, Amy's point, it's really sad because the seniors who are graduating June 6th really only got about two and a half years of high school before they go off to college or wherever their next journey takes them. And long-term funding, again, it's, we rely on our taxpayers. I think we have to lean on money more heavily and also with the current Biden.
Thank you.
Tax plan.
Marcus Schabacher, what short and long-term action will you support to lessen the financial impact of the pandemic?
Well, there clearly has been a financial impact because we see decline in the taxes coming in from our businesses. So number one is to keep the reputation of our school as high as possible. So with that, that we have a continued influx of people and families who want to live in Lake Forest because this is going to drive up property value and therefore property taxes without us having the need to increase taxes. So that's the, that's the short and long term. But we also, I think, need to look clearly at what kind of additional needs these kids can have when they come back full-time. And I fully agree particularly from emotional and social. We need to spend additional resources and I fully agree with Jeff that there is plenty of opportunity as an operator to, to find savings and efficiencies before we go and ask for additional money. So those will be my actions immediately to make sure that our reputation as a school district remains high and we continue to have the necessary funds available through our taxes from our citizens.
Thank you. John Benson, same question?
I think the school board deserves some kudos for navigating us through the financial impact of COVID today. And I think, I think that our biggest concern long-term is going to be, as Marcus pointed out, this is going to be a change world. Our students are going to. And we need to look at how we're going to spend our money to prepare students to be ready for that world, whether that's increased use of technology, whether that's a digital world that has much more virtual learning than it did. And, and so I think we need to look very carefully at, to prepare for a post-COVID existence that could be very different from what we have had before 2019.
David Burns?
Yeah, I, you know, in the short-term, I'm actually very okay with how we're spending our money right now. This is, this is something we, none of us, none, none of us have seen in terms of COVID. And it, it is necessary that we spend whatever is necessary to get our kids back into school. I know nobody wants to see the testing costs and, and things that we're doing. But if, if the compromise is to have our kids at home, this is good money spent. And we've done an amazing job of putting ourselves in a great financial position with a AAA bond rating, low rates. We got some of the lowest tax rates in our peer group from a community perspective. So I, I'm not worried about the short-term, but long-term we do need to be deliberate. We've got a big laundry list and we need to be strategic about what we need to do now in terms of improvements to the building. I also think, looking again at the shared services agreement, our shared services model, I don't know. We need to make efficiencies now, work together with the 67 board to make improvements there. But in the long run, we need to take a look at it at a higher level to see what other options are and, and potentially any other synergies we can get.
Thank you. And Sally Davis?
So I hope that if you get a chance, you will look at the campaign rhetoric that's going on in the Stevenson School District. Because one of the teams that is running for Stevenson's High School Board has pinned a lot of their rhetoric on why can't we be more like Lake Forest? They have the lowest tax rate in the county. They have a strong fund balance and they spend more percentage-wise on direct instructional spending rather than operations. Having said that, the pandemic was expensive. We planned for the ability to, to spend that kind of money. It is short-term spend only because it is largely driven by one-time costs. Our fund balance can withstand it and we are still going to be within our requisite amount. With respect to the long-term, we have opportunity. Our kids and our teachers have shown us that we can do remote learning and with planning and with investment, not necessarily through taxes, but through a variety of funding vehicles such as going to the foundation, we can find ways to improve and lower the, the burden.
Thank you. How do you intend to address the academic, social and emotional needs of students? And we'll start with Amy Marsh.
So I think what, what, what Wednesday night proved to me was that the best way to address the students' social and emotional needs is to listen to them, hear what they have to say, hear how they're feeling. We have smart kids in this community. We have wonderful kids in this community. When they start high school, they're 14. You know, and they leave, they're 18, they're young adults, they're off into the world and they have a voice and they deserve to be listened to. Our job is to represent them, to give them the best education that we can, to give them the support, to give them the services. And I think it needs to start with listening to what they have to say. I also think that academically, I mean, it, it's hard. It's been a year of remote learning and I have a freshman and I can tell you, it has been a difficult year for him to start off as his freshman year. The teachers, his teachers have been amazing. They are in school with him. He notices a huge difference when he goes into the building than when he's home. He tells me that he remembers now that he can pay attention more. He's learning more. So I think once our students are back into the school, we'll be able to tell more with the academics.
Thank you. Joanna Marshall, same question?
We have, you know, a great deal of work ahead of us in order to make sure that the students, when they come back, are very socially and emotionally stable. When we spent some time with the children last week, it was unbelievable how they weren't. They felt like they weren't listened to. They felt like they didn't have a voice. And when they had a voice, they were so empowered. They walked away from our round table feeling like there was hope at the end of the tunnel because there were people in this community that were listening to them and ready to potentially employ a plan. These kids need to be back in school full-time. They need, we need to figure out how to get their sports back. We need to figure out how to get their clubs back. We need to figure out all those things that give them a sense and a need and the effort to wake up in the morning and get to school. They are social creatures. They need to be in the building and have all those senses of social interaction back. They are very much, you know, it, it's very challenging. I'm, I'm still very affected about hearing those 20 voices and how they're suffering so much.
Thank you.
So we need to work on that.
Thank you. Ted Mormon?
Yeah, I think we're going a long ways just opening the school fully on April 5th. It's going to be an awesome opportunity for the kids and listening to the kids. And that's all they've been saying, you know, since the beginning of COVID. They just want to be back in school with their peers. And with the proper PPE and other mitigation efforts, we can do it. The only big thing you want to do is when they do come back, you want to make it as normal as possible. You know, we don't want to have them come back into a school system that is, you know, still buttoned down and where everybody's kind of, you know, on lockdown. But we need to also do the after-school activities. Just get, getting kids face-to-face again with one another is the best thing we can do at, you know, at this point. And that's going to move their emotional supports so much just in itself and it doesn't cost anything.
Thank you. Marcus Schabacher?
It's going to be very important, as some of you already mentioned, is that we really listen to the students and that we have an open ear and understanding of what they truly, what the impact truly was. What we have fantastic staff, not just the teachers, but also the support staff who are professionals in dealing with young adults. And we need to have them do a professional assessment of where the situation is and where, what additional help and support the board can provide through directed extra and curricular activities. I just want to quickly mention, you know, the impression is created here that the school has been in complete lockdown. I don't know, my, my high school kids have been back in sports, both soccer and basketball for weeks now. I know that there's other extracurricular activities who have been going on. And I compliment the staff for taking not just the learning and academic experience here, but those social needs as well. And they have done a tremendous job and gone out of their way to make that possible. So really applaud them. So I'm very confident that they will be able to guide us on what else they need to help those kids when they come back.
Thank you. John Benson?
As an educational leader, I have listened to students all my life for their input and I will continue to do so. I think the important thing is not just that we need to listen to the students, but we need to develop the avenues and opportunities for both reaching out to them and having them reach out to us. They're all individuals and they will have different needs and different issues. Bottom line is, yes, it needs to be a great year for the students who are coming back, whether they be freshmen returning or seniors. Most importantly, we need to have them well-prepared to be in a good place when they move on beyond Lake Forest High School.
Thank you. David Burns?
Yeah, so I, I totally agree. We need to listen to the students. But really what we need to do, I think, on top of that is treating each student as an individual. We can't put everybody in one bucket, whether it be academically, socially, emotionally. They, they're all different. And by listening to them and understanding their unique needs, we can help them better. And we've done an amazing job of putting in our core teams and tiered support structure. And I want to make sure that they have all the resources and tools available to address those. And I want to address them individually. This is not, you know, the real world is not putting everybody in one bucket. So being able to reach out to each student in a way that works for them and is going to help them get through this is what we need to focus on and invest in.
Thank you. Sally Davis?
We all agree that the kids need to be in person as much as possible. It's why when the administration recommended that we go to full remote in the fall, I voted against that because I knew that even if it was once or twice a week that the kids were able to come into school, even in imperfect conditions, we could do what Deerfield, Highland Park, New Trier and Stevenson didn't and couldn't do. In addition, we've talked a lot here about the importance of extracurriculars. There's a reason why we know that matters. Social, emotional wellness is tied to kids being actively involved in sports, chess club, you pick it. As a result, we use that as a loophole from the restrictions that the state put on us to ensure that our kids were able to come into the building and be seen and see each other as much as possible. Lastly, beginning in 2015, when we hired Dr. Holland, one of the things we said is we need more emotional supports for our kids. As a result, we have been investing in the kinds of supports, emotional and academic, that our kids need to succeed. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Giannelli?
Thank you. The kids' social and emotional wellbeing is the core of who we are. Students first. You know, I hurt everybody and to me, we can't trivialize the basic tenors of what the children and the students need. We can sit here and talk a lot about a lot of different programs and things. And I too give credit where credit is due that we're back. However, we're missing the engagement. I wasn't planning to run. I decided to run after years of talking to the board and to the administrators and realizing that seldomly are the real students discussed. Seldomly are we addressing their social and emotional wellbeing and seldomly are we bringing them and making them engaged. For me, it's about engagement. I met with those kids. I continue to meet with kids. Folks, we need to, as a board, when I get on the board, my first goal is going to be to do what I suggested to the board several meetings ago. We need to, as board members, walk the halls, be in there with our kids, bring them to round tables and make them at the center of who we are. We're here for the kids. Bottom line.
Thank you. Joanna Marshall, comment on diversity in the context of District 115?
I am all for building a platform that puts all the students first. I think we need to have and maintain an environment that is inclusionary. And I think that I, you know, I am an absolute big believer in inclusionary learning. I am a big believer that if we build the best academic program in school that we can, that many families from many areas will be welcomed in this community. I also believe that we need to honor and cherish the diversity that we do have at Lake Forest High School. In terms of the inclusionary classroom, I am a huge believer in that. You know, I have a daughter who is an IEP. She would be nowhere without pushing and pushing out of classes. She has, you know, several learning disabilities and she has been lost in the system until I found her. And without having supports with the, the special needs that she has, I don't know where she'd be today because she got to a place that was so horrible that she had to go to outpatient facilities. So I'm all for building a platform of education and support for all.
Thank you. Ted Mormon, discuss your diverse, comment on diversity in the context of District 115?
Now, obviously diversity is extremely important. Kids are, as others have mentioned, they're all individuals. They all learn differently. They all need different types of supports. And as Joanna Marshall was just alluding to, we really want to include the kids and bring them into the fold and have them in the least restrictive environment possible. That's why also I'm on the board of the Northern Suburban Special Ed District. And that's, we, we are really pushing to get the kids from an SSED back into their home district classrooms. And even if they can't do it all the time, it really helps to see them and their peers help them the most, which is, it's, it's wonderful to see and, you know, for them to make lifelong relationships. So in, in, an inclusive environment is essential.
Thank you. Marcus Schabacher, same question?
Yeah, thank you. So as a dad of, you raising kids and a husband of an Asian wife, I'm glad I can tell you that there's room for improvement to do something regarding diversity in the District 115. But I do want to recognize that the district has, particularly since Dr. Holland came on by untracking the kids and creating opportunities to create equity, not equality, but equity for the children. So then each child gets what he or she needs to reach their best. I really applaud those efforts, but we need to continue them. And we need to continue to invest and realize that diversity is more than just race or creed or religion. It has to do with the diversity of thinking and we need to be inclusive in that thinking. We can't just have the right people on the table. We also need to listen to them. So that is what I'm going to aim for as a board member, where we're making sure that all voices are heard and that they're part of the decision-making.
Thank you. John Benson?
Diversity is obviously paramount. I, I think that allowing students of every size, shape, whatever makes them slightly different is, is something we, we all want to strive for. But inclusion is not just letting them all sit in the same classroom together. We need to take steps to ensure that everyone from the superintendent to the faculty and staff have the ability to understand the needs of individuals who come from diverse backgrounds or have diverse, diverse issues so that we can include them and that we can tailor our, our inclusion to best serve their needs and their interests.
Thank you. David Burns, would you comment on diversity in the context of District 115?
Yes. So diversity is not only a reality of what we have, what we are living in, but it is one of the best things about it. It, we have to not only acknowledge but embrace it. Diversity makes everything better. We all have different perspectives. We all have different skills. And I think the high school has done a nice job so far, although there's always room for improvement through de-tracking and providing opportunities for everyone. And in addition, we've also set up the core teams and, and support services to not just give those opportunities, but to also enable each and every one, no matter how diverse in any way they are, give them the resources and tools to be the best people they can be. And by having them all in the classroom and being inclusive, everybody benefits from this. People get support from their peers and they also learn leadership skills and mentoring skills along the way too. So I think we're doing a great job. We can certainly do better too.
Thank you. Sally Davis?
One of the things we do to listen to our students, not only while they're still at the high school, but then after they go to college, is we actually send out a survey and we ask them, now that they've had time to reflect on their experience at Lake Forest High School, now that they're in college, what can they tell us? One of the things they tell us is that they were phenomenally academically well-prepared. The other thing they tell us is that they were not well-prepared for the diversity of the real world. And so to quote Marcus, I think there is more that we can be doing to help all of these kids deal with the fact that they're going into a complicated, complex world. Equity and access mean that kids who might need an IEP or supports in one area like math might also be able to enter into honors and AP courses in social studies and history. With de-tracking, we've been able to do that and to ensure that all kids, regardless of the supports they need or their backgrounds, have access to what we like to call the good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Giannelli? Thank you. Jeff Gianelli?
Thank you. Of course, we want diversity. The United States was, is a melting pot of the world. My parents immigrated to this country from Italy. That's what makes this country phenomenal. But here's the challenge. As I walk the streets and knock on doors and talk to community members, we're mixing all these terms, diversity, de-tracking, IEP, AEP. There is such confusion on the street in our community. There is no clear vision of what we're trying to do. When I'm on the school board, my first goal is going to be to work together to make sure we're transparent, and we list these out, putting everything in a bucket and trying to shake it all together and hope that it sells is not the right way to go. Yes, we need diversity. Yes, we have to meet our students where they need to be. But I fear that what we're doing by oversimplifying and putting everything in one big bucket and hoping that it comes out as a new cocktail is a mistake. So we need to be transparent. We need to clearly identify what we mean when we talk about diversity, what we mean when we talk about de-tracking, IEPs, et cetera. Look, when my kids walk into the school and your kids walk into the school, that whole building should be safe, and everybody should be able to learn.
Thank you. Amy Marsh?
As a former teacher, I absolutely wholeheartedly support and believe in an inclusionary classroom. I think it's where students shine, where their individual skills, they shine, they show up, the other kids get to accept and learn and start to celebrate everybody's differences, learn how to work together. They learn, they're taught empathy, which is, I think, is super important in kids and citizens and, you know, who you're raising, your young, young, young ones at home. So I would absolutely think that an inclusionary classroom is so beneficial to not just the kids, but, you know, to the teachers as well.
Thank you. Ted Mormon? How will you use your skills to maintain financial stability for the district over the next five years?
Over the next five years, we actually have a five-year plan that we, you know, check every year. Job one is maintaining our AAA bond rating. Job two, if we end up talking about school improvements, enhancements, we need to take that to the community in the form of a referendum rather than just taxing and doing it on our own. And we need to listen to the community because we don't want to make mistakes like were made at the building of West Campus, which is, even though we use it, it's, it was never really a department. We actually didn't need it because we were working with a short-term increase in student population. And today, we have a decreasing student population, and it's forecast to go down about 100 students a year, each year over the next three years. So we really need to look at, you know, what we need as far as classrooms. I think we learned from the pandemic, we need bigger classrooms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marcus Schabacher?
So my skills were honed in the healthcare industry. I've led organizations with four and a half thousand people, $650 million in budgets. I currently run an organization, a non-for-profit organization, where you can imagine every single dime we spend is turned twice before we do with a $70 million budget, which is not so dissimilar to the school's budget. Now, it's not our responsibility to actually operate the school, but the board has to set the framework for that and ensure the finances are there. And I agree, we will have opportunities to look in our shared service model to find efficiencies. We're spending 70% plus on on our personnel, so there's 30%, which we really can go after. And as Jeff has alluded, there's usually areas where you can find, where you can drive efficiencies and effectiveness. So putting that financial plan in place is going to be important. And then we need to look at what are the key issues we need to solve for from a master facility plan, and then put this together and find additional funding, like donations and fundraising.
Thank you. John Benson?
As dean of a pediatric medical school for 10 years that existed within a university setting, I engaged on an annual basis, at the very least, and probably on a much more frequent basis, with parties of all kinds who were putting demands on the limited resources that we had based on what the university had to give us. I got used to having conversations that allowed us to move money where it belonged, to apply money where it was most needed, and to engage, in addition, with the other schools in the university to see where we could make, say, and see some savings by combining resources or combining services. And I hope to be able to put that experience to use as we navigate through the fiscal decisions made by the school board.
David Burns?
So my background is a mechanical engineer, as an engineer, both bachelors and masters and an MBA, along with my experience being a plant manager and running a business. I completely understand the necessity of operational effectiveness and efficiency. I've got, as an engineer, the methodology and process to collect data, to analyze it, to understand what are the costs and what are the benefits of all the different actions. I take in all the information and analyze it. I understand why things are the way they are. I don't accept the status quo as being that's the way we should do things. I'm a ground-up financial kind of person to rationalize why we're doing things. And so it's my analytic, methodical, process-oriented approach that I think will enable me to look at our financial situation, understand where there are opportunities, and work together with the team to come up with solutions to improve the situation.
Thank you. Sally Davis?
As the only lawyer on the District 115 Board and the only lawyer running for 115, I can tell you that, as Marcus said, with 70% of our costs sunk into personnel, that's the place where, in the short term, we look for efficiencies. In addition, we look for efficiencies by improving, maintaining our shared services model. With respect to personnel costs, I am the chief negotiator for the district. With the teachers and the support staff union, we have collective bargaining agreements with the teachers that renew in 2023. One of the interesting questions is going to be, as we map and plan for our personnel costs, what opportunities remote learning and the pandemic have given us to learn about how we can better utilize technology as well as the the skill of the teachers that we hire? In addition, we will have to make capital improvements, and we will not be able to do that solely with the budget that we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Gianelli?
Thank you very much. I I think that I'm very well-suited to maintain the financial stability of the school. We run a privately-held company. We're not private equity. Every dollar we have is critical to us. I will respect every tax dollar and make sure we drive the efficiency that we need to. As an example, we need to look at the numbers. Enrollment has been down over the last five years. And yes, our adminis, and yet our administrators, full-time employment count has stayed the same, and our costs have gone up. We need to come in the inside. We need to look at our costs. We need to make sure we drive the efficiencies. In my world, we call it lean manufacturing. You don't have to spend money to be efficient and to deliver world-class products, and that's what I plan to do. But I can promise you one thing. And what I'm hearing here is that remote learning may be a way to contain cost stability. Remote learning doesn't work. I want our kids in the classroom. You can never replace the teachers. The teachers in the classroom are the best way to go. So I'll promise you, I won't raise your taxes to do this. And I promise you, we're not going to keep our kids home to make sure we can save money in order to maintain financial stability.
Thank you. Amy Marsh?
As board members, we obviously have a responsibility to the taxpayers, to the community. I have my parents still live here, my in-laws, all their friends, they pay taxes. Their kids aren't going to school anymore. I do not believe in raising their property taxes when they are already so high. I can also tell you that as an educator, as someone who's been on both sides of the classroom door, you do not need to spend money to better your children's education. There are so many things that we can do. There are so many things that this community can do that they want to do, that they are willing to do. We need to have transparency so that people know what their options are. I've had so many people come up to me lately saying, we would love to volunteer. We'd love to be there for the high school students. What can we do? How can we get involved? And I think we need to start by being transparent and by being responsible to our taxpayers. And I don't think we need to look at spending a ton of money to better our children's education.
Joanna Marshall? You're on mute.
I have built career-long achievements off of doing more with less and probably saved, you know, $10 million, $20 million a year annually for my clients every year. And this is why I haven't lost any of my clients throughout 25 years. I also have incredible negotiation skills, and I think we need to bring some very strong negotiation skills to the board. I've been lucky enough to negotiate over $8 billion throughout my career. I also think that with collaborative and innovative thinking and tapping into the great minds of Lake Forest, because we have such great minds here and the great minds of Lake Bluff as well, we together as a community can make sure that we can maintain our fiscal responsibility and do more with less. And I think that's a big focus of what we need to do and make sure that we don't raise any taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. So looking at the time, we're going to move to closing statements. You get 90 seconds. That's a minute and a half, and we're going to go from the bottom up. So John Benson, would you give your no more than 90-second closing statement?
Thank you. I want to start just by saying thank you to the League for hosting the forum, and I hope the audience found it informative. I'm going to close by telling a little story. Both of my children went to Lake Forest High School, went on to college, both met their spouses there. My son, when he was in the first semester of his junior year, told us that he didn't want to go back for his second semester because he wanted to accept a job offer in California in the golf industry. We really struggled with that, but we decided to allow him to do it because it was his passion. I did ask him, however, how he was going to pursue his finishing his college career, and his words to me were, quote, "Dad, I learned everything I really need at Lake Forest High School." That has stuck with me over all these years. He did well in his job. He, three years ago, opened his own company and is doing very well now. And we couldn't be more proud of him. The point of the story really is that high school education is much more than academics. The reason for what you want to get out of a high school education is to provide each and every student with the tools, skills, and confidence they need to fulfill their potential and promise in whatever direction they choose. And I pledge to make sure that every student gets that experience.
Thank you. Marcus Schabacher, your closing statement?
Yeah, thank you. This was certainly an enlightening afternoon. And now I just want to, one more time, mention that our administration, our staff, during these unprecedented times, have done a phenomenal job in keeping our kids engaged. These young students moving forward, certainly not at the speed we would have hoped for, but that we were the first public school who went back with in-person learning, with extracurricular activities. And we are now going to a full-term, full-time learning as soon as we come out of the spring break, and we need to do everything we can to keep this forward and make, keep everybody safe. I think what this community needs and deserves is a board of education, has an open mind, nonpartisan, highly committed, proven, and vetted individuals who are willing and able to understand the facts, will listen to all the involved, and then make thoughtful and deliberate decisions without preconceived notions and a political agenda. And many issues, which we have some discussed here, the new school board has to tackle. Onboarding new superintendent, developing a master facility plan, evaluate our shared administration model, improve communication with the community, restore our trustful and effective relationship with our teachers. But most importantly, we need to ensure that our students can be back in school, positive and effective learning experience, which prepares them for their careers and adult life. And you have these candidates do this. John, Sally, Dave, and I are your candidates to do this.
Thank you. Ted Mormon? Your closing statement?
Again, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. We, I I am proud that, you know, we were able to open schools even, you know, last fall. Not as much as we, a lot of us would have liked, but we kept the door open, at least cracked a little bit. And people remember, initially, the superintendent came to us with a road to reopen, which was not reopening at all. It basically ended up just advocating for a full-remote model for the foreseeable future. The entire board did say, no, that's, that's not what we want. Go back to the drawing board and figure out how we we can open the school, have some, you know, after-school activities, but we have to do it for the kids. And also, you know, we need to build a relationship with our new superintendent, which is going to be really important, to get off on the right foot. And I think also with the other teams, I think our ed administration and the teachers often butted heads. I think we need to build all of our relationships so we can all work together. And if you like what I've done in the past several years, and trust me going forward, I humbly ask for your vote for Amy Marsh, Joanna Marshall, Jeff Gianelli, and myself.
Thank you. Joanna Marshall, your closing statement?
Thank you. I have three children. I'm sorry, I have four children, but I have three of them, and they all range from AP to IEP. And each one of them throughout the last year has needed to seek therapy. One of them, if he didn't have a golf club in his hand, I'm not sure where he would be. One of them, whose doctor deemed e-learning psychologically unsafe for her, and she couldn't access education at all along the way. And I have fought hard by the side of each one of them for the last year. And so I am running, and I'm here for every single mother, every single father from Lake Forest and Lake Bluff that's by my side, that has fought hard, that want their kids back in school, and they want them back in permanently, and they want transparency from the communicate, from the board. They want fiscal responsibility, and they want to know that they have a board that they can trust, that is doing the right thing for their students. These children need to be back. They need to be back together. And we are the right people, Jeff, Ted, Amy, and I, to do that for you. So thank you very much. And I am going to fight for every student, every student, again, from AP to IEP, because that is what is represented in my household. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you again for having us today. Um, I am a mom. I'm a community member. I sat listening to Sally and Ted and the rest of the board during the summer. I remember walking. It was a very long meeting for all of you. I remember going to two different baseball games for my boys. And I was so thrilled when you fought to get these kids back in school, just something, right? I have looked forward to my freshman going to Lake Forest High School, literally since the day he was born. My husband and I always knew this is where we wanted to raise our kids. Lake Forest High School is an amazing school. It is an amazing place. Teachers are fabulous. The community is fabulous. The kids are incredible, and I think that we truly need to come together. I am tired, just like all of you. I'm tired of people using the kids as pawns in games. And these kids, they need to be in school. This is, this is their childhood, right? Even those 18-year-olds, they're still kids. They're living at home. They're seniors. They're supposed to be making mistakes and learning from their mistakes and then moving on. It is our job to be there for these kids. We, we need somebody in Lake Bluff who can make sure that our kids from Lake Bluff are ready. Our kids use Chromebooks. When they go freshman year, that's not a Chromebook. There's just, that's one difference. I know that because I am living Lake Bluff Junior High and Elementary School for the next several years. So I really would appreciate, I would appreciate your vote. I will do my best for all of you.
Thank you. Jeff Gianelli, your closing statement?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters today for organizing this. Thank you to all the running mates that we have here today. And certainly thank you to those who have taken the time to listen in and invest their time to understand what's happening at the high school. I've spoken with many of you who've shared positive stories and expectations for the school. I've also met with students who've shared their struggles over the last several months, and they are looking forward to regaining what they've lost. My opponents here today, our opponents here today, would like you to believe that there's very little difference between all of us. Certainly, we want our kids to be back in school, and that's a common thread, but there's a lot different between all of us. And I firmly believe that we can do it. We can do better. Rest assured, there's no magic required here that has been implied in the past. We simply need to focus on the school and the measurable outcome of what we're doing. We need to move Lake Forest High School from commendable to exemplary, equal to our neighbors in New Trier High School, Stevenson, Libertyville, and Vernon Hills. If you elect me on the, to the school board, I'm going to work for all of you. I'm going to work with every stakeholder, board, teachers. There's good people in that building and the administration that we want to I'm going to work with every stakeholder, board, teachers. There's good people in that building and the administration that we want to work with. I will put students first. I'll be transparent and responsive to the community and I'll be fiscally responsible to your tax dollars. I'm confident that if you send the right team to the school board, we'll achieve your desired outcomes, our desired outcomes without raising your taxes. Right now, it's up to you. The residents of Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood, you now have the ability to vet who you want to represent you. Let's do it better and I always ask for your vote.
Thank you. Sally Davis.
Thanks to everybody who participated today. It always is heartwarming for me to see that even though we may have differences, we all deeply are committed to our students' success and well-being. As your current Board Vice President, Dave Blaine, who is the president, and I are both Lake Bluff residents and have taken our kids all the way through the Lake Bluff schools. I don't think that we are under index since the president and the vice president of the board and Dave Burns, who is running with me, are all Lake Bluff residents. I would also like to just correct that Mr. Giannelli seems to think that I'm talking about advocating for a remote learning environment. I'm not. There are going to be students who are going to have to stay remote, either because they have family members who can't have them back in the building or because they have other reasons why they can't be with us. And that's where I was talking about any measure of ability to have remote learning cost savings. Having said that, you are choosing the stewards and guardians of your children and your tax money. Those are sacred duties for us. And we are an incredibly strong, resilient, resourceful community with a shared value of student success. Through the superhuman efforts of our, everyone in our district, our kids are being back, welcomed back full-time to in-person learning. Lake Forest High School was the first high-performing high school in our area to bring our kids back into the building. Let's continue to be the standard barrier for our region by rolling up our sleeves to do the important work of helping them chart this return to a norm, new normal and assure every student a strong future, not only in 2021, but for the next four years. Thanks.
Thank you. David Burns, your closing statement.
Well, thanks again to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. And also thanks to all the participants who are listening, because what it means is that you care about your candidates and you care about the election and that's really important. And it's important because this election is important and this, the results here could shape the direction of our school and the experience for our kids. I'm extraordinarily impressed with what Shayla has been able to accomplish, her achievement, and strongly believe our school is doing very well. We have priorities. We have things that we can improve. We need to continue to get our kids back in school. We need to do a better job with transparency and we need to come up with a master facilities plan and plan that out strategically and deliberately. But that being said, there's going to be new and unknown challenges that we'll have to face in the future. Who would have seen COVID coming? I don't think the board had planned on that. So, with that being said, I don't want you, what I want you to remember about me is not that I have every single answer figured out, but rather that through my experience, my diverse experience and my education, I've learned to be a great listener and great team player. I seek to understand and work towards solutions, not to divide. And bottom line, I don't have an agenda. But instead, I just want to work hard with all of our stakeholders to build upon our already great educational experience for all of our students. Thank you again to all and I hope we've earned your vote today.
Thank you. Our time is up for this forum. If you stick around on this Zoom link as an attendee, you'll see the District 67 School Board Candidates Forum. But for more information on District 115 Candidates, please visit the nonpartisan website, illinoisvoterguide.org, the candidates' websites, as well as the Legal Women Voters of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Area website. We appreciate your participation, whether you are a candidate or a voter. It's essential to preserve our freedom in our country. I am told that on March 18th, there will be a Lake Bluff Non-School Race Zoom Candidate Forum. And you can register on Legal Women Voters, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff.org website. But please remember to vote, whether it's vote by mail, early voting, or on Election Day on April 6th. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Take care, everyone.
Good afternoon. Welcome, League and Community Members. I'm Lori Rose, President of the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Area, and I'm excited to welcome you to our Spring 2021 Board of Education Candidate Forum on Zoom. The League is very grateful for your participation and for the many questions that were forwarded to us. For those of you who are Zoom or local government fanatics, some of what I say may be repetitive, but we have some people who have joined us for the District 67 Forum, so I appreciate your patience. This program is being recorded and the League claims copyright ownership for any recording or transcripts produced. This forum will be posted on our website, on our social media pages, and in the Illinois Voter Guide at illinoisvoterguide.org. The nonpartisan League of Women Voters stands firm in our commitment to empower voters and defend democracy. Our commitment to these principles is honored through the sponsorship of programs such as this forum, in the creation of the Illinois Voter Guide, a nonpartisan compilation of candidates in all Illinois races, and in our support for voter registration and education programs on a variety of topics throughout the year. The League has been engaging in this work for more than 100 years. We value equity and inclusion in principle and practice and our members include people of all genders, races, religions, political parties, and ages. We believe that the opportunity to meet and question candidates for office is of paramount importance. We're fortunate to be assisted by a very experienced moderator for today's forum. In keeping with our practice, our moderator is not a Lake County resident or Lake County voter. Jan Dorner is currently co-president of the Elmhurst League of Women Voters. She's also Vice President of the State League Board and has been moderating League debates and forums for nearly two decades. Jan will introduce the candidates and explain the rules of the forum to us. Thank you very much, Jan.
Thanks, Lori. Welcome to the Candidate Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Area. Questions for this forum have been collected from the League and community members before this forum and were screened for duplication, clarity, and appropriateness to the office's school board member. This forum is between the six candidates seeking four open positions for Lake Forest School District 67 School Board. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum and have not been provided the questions before the forum. I would specifically like to highlight that no portion of voice or image recordings or other duplication of the forum may be used by any candidate's representative or campaign or in any advertising for or against a candidate or issue. Each candidate will present a 90-second introductory statement. The order to start is alphabetical. Then, questions will be asked and each candidate will have up to one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements will also be 90 seconds in reverse order of opening statements. A League member will keep time and candidates, I am asking you to adhere to the time limits. So, when you see the times-up slide, you may finish your sentence. Our candidates today are Emily Bernal, Taylor Cottam, Lori Fitzgerald, Anne Garrity Helms, Carol Keier, and Alice Levert. So, let's start with opening statements and Emily Bernal, you'll be first.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Emily Bernal. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak with the Lake Forest community today. My husband and I moved to Lake Forest about four and a half years ago, specifically seeking this area for public, the public schools and their reputation for excellence. In addition, we were looking for a community, a forever community that we could be a part of to volunteer our time and give of our time. I'm a mom of two District 67 children. I have a sixth grader at Deer Path and I have a fourth grader at Everett. It has been through our experience with the Everett staff who have guided us through the emotional journey of creating an IEP that I felt this board position was a way for me to give back while possibly helping other families along the way. Over the past year, like so many parents listening today, I have served as an in-house tutor, IT specialist, bus driver, master of asynchronous synchronous schedules, and the occasional wellness partner. I, like so many of you, wiped tears, coached, encouraged, yelled, and cried, all while trying to maintain professionalism on conference calls. Professionally, I'm a small business owner. My firm focuses on land development process and provides consultation services to commercial and retail clients. In my day-to-day, my success requires collaboration with multidisciplinary professionals. Attention to detail requires me to quickly assess my audience so I can effectively communicate and ensure success of my projects. I believe my professional skills will contribute to the success of the board and help make it function more effectively. I'm a diligent listener, timely communicator, and avid problem solver. I look forward to using my attributes to help not only my kids back in school and on the right track, but yours as well.
Thank you. Our next opening statement comes from Taylor Cottam.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Taylor Cottam. I grew up in Houston, Texas, and received a bachelor's degree in international relations here in the US and an MBA in finance from INSEAD in France and Singapore. Having spent a career in risk and finance, this has brought me to Latin America, Canada, Africa, Asia, and Europe. Having lived overseas for several years, I was looking for a challenging academic environment for me to raise my children so that they could flourish. I put down roots right here in Lake Forest when my oldest was in seventh grade. Since then, all four of my children have attended District 67 schools. What attracted me most was the Chinese immersion program at Cherokee for my daughter. Few things are more important to me than the education of my children. International experience has taught me that the talent pool is global. We would do well to remember that our kids are not just competing with Highland Park or even Dallas. With Zoom, now we're competing against kids from Singapore, San Paulo, Shanghai, and Frankfurt. My focus will be on three things: be a good risk steward with our taxpayer funds, enforcing a trusting environment between parents, teachers, and students, and ensure that students have opportunities to grow and excel with teaching focused on challenging math, enlightening science, and uplifting literature. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is from Lori Fitzgerald.
Hi, everyone. I think this is the most exciting afternoon since Super Bowl Sunday. My name is Lori Fitzgerald. I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for setting this up. I'm not only excited to interact and share my views and vision for District 67, but also have the opportunity to learn from my fellow candidates. I think we all agree that we have a common passion for our schools and the success of our students. A little bit about me, I'm a lifelong resident of Lake Forest. I attended high school at Lake Forest Academy and went on to earn my bachelor's degree in business and economics from Lehigh University. I currently work for a large technology company, leading a $300 million a year multidisciplinary team of sales and engineering specialists to design technical solutions to help solve complex business problems. I'm a member of the Women in Action Group to help accelerate young women with their interest in pursuing a career in the STEM field. I'm also a member of the Black Networking Alliance so that I can learn how to be an advocate for driving diversity and inclusion in the workplace. I have three teenagers, two in District 115 and one in District 67 still. And I decided to run for the board because I think when you go through challenging times, like our school district has seen this past year, it exposes the gaps and weaknesses as well as what your strengths are. I believe we have a gap in communication and transparency between our community and our school administration. And I think our teachers and our students are in the crossfire. I think we have a strength in our passion and our resonance and how much we value our schools and I would like to leverage those strengths to bridge that gap. Thank you.
Our next opening statement is from Anne Garrity Helms.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having me here today. My name's Anne Garrity Helms and I'm, it's just an honor to be running for the District 67 School Board. My husband and I have two children, one in sixth grade at Deer Path Middle School and the other in fourth grade at Cherokee. I'm also a lawyer, a proud Georgetown Law grad, and I direct the US Probono Program at a global law firm. As part of my job, I represent children and families who are facing issues that impact their safety and security. Sadly, much of my work these days is focused on issues created or exacerbated by the pandemic, like housing security and hunger. I'm running for the school board because service to the community is part of who I am and I'm hopeful that my professional experience will offer an additional perspective to the board. Finally, as a mother, I can also relate to how hard this year has been for our families. Our schools are at the center of our community and I think we've seen how hard it is for all of us when they're not operating normally. If elected, my focus will be on the future and on three immediate goals. First, bringing kids back into school in a smart, fiscally responsible way. Second, focusing on restoring what our kids have lost over the past year, either academically or emotionally. And finally, helping a successful transition to a new superintendent who will bring our schools back better and stronger and who will address some of the ongoing concerns of this community.
Thank you. Our next opening statement comes from Carl Kirar.
Well done. My last name is very hard to pronounce, so I understand. Thank you for, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us today. My name is Carl Kirar and I'm a Lake Forest resident, parent of two children in the school district, and I'm the newest District 67 School Board Member. and I'm current, and I'm the newest District 67 School Board member. I'm currently fulfilling the remaining term of vacated board position and running for a full term this spring, a number three on the ballot. Let me start with a little bit about myself. I'm originally from northern Wisconsin. I attended the University of Wisconsin and graduated with a civil engineer degree. Afterwards, I was commissioned in the US Navy where I served around the world, some great places, not so great places, all that fun stuff. I did have the great honor and opportunity to finish my naval career right up the road here in Naval Station Great Lakes. I currently work for Lake County Government as a department head, running all of their facilities, and along with my military service, I guess you could say that I've dedicated my professional career to public service. As a public, as a servant leader, excuse me, my focus will be to provide the tools to administrators, staff, teachers, and to the students to meet and exceed our high educational standards. As a son of a middle school teacher, I have immense respect for the challenges and joys of teaching. As a government administrator, I am fiscally conservative with a focus on critical operational needs within a lean budget. And as a parent of two students within the district, I'm 100% invested in the success of our schools. Once again, I'm Carl Kirar, I'm running for school board membership, and I'm number three on the school, on a ballot. So thank you for your consideration. I look forward to serving our great community for the next four years. Thank you.
Alice Levert is our last opening statement, 90 seconds.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Alice Levert, and I'm running for reelection to the District 67 Board of Education. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all who are joining us today. I've lived in Lake Forest for 27 years with my husband Tim and my two boys, Patrick and William. I went to undergraduate at Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, and I have an executive MBA from the University of Notre Dame. During my time on District 67's board, I've served on the Finance and Operations Committee, the Education Committee, the Policy Committee. I've been the board secretary for four years, and I'm currently the legislative liaison. I volunteered to be on the school board because I care about our children's education and the health of our schools. I also represent more than 70% of our community who chooses to live in Lake Forest, pay property taxes, which fund our schools but actually don't have children using the schools at the moment. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the District 67 Board, and I look forward to doing so again. I'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Cotten, what are your top three priorities and how will you accomplish them? You're muted.
Apologies. Number one would be open the schools now completely and as much as possible. That would include allowing the children to actually socially interact. Another part of that is every year in Deer Path, they would have the color run or some kind of Olympic Games where they have. For me, the first thing I would do is I would love to see that. I would love to see the children out there racing and running and laughing and playing because of all the things that have been missing, there has been learning going on, we won't deny that, but what has been missing has been the laughter in the hallways. So that's the first thing. Open, open the schools. Number two thing is the color run, and the third thing is just be mindful of the cost, caution of the, of the costs that are going in. There's a couple of things that we have to think about. One is, are all the things that we've done during the pandemic necessary to continue going forward? I think we need to have a good, hard look at some of the things that we've done, and if we get back to a more normal situation, let's get back to normal financially as well.
Thank you. Lori Fitzgerald.
Hi, thank you. So my first priority is getting our kids' academic level back up to where it, it should be, back on track pre-pandemic. I mean, I know we've been hybrid, you know, half-day, half-school days, but it's been a very disjointed year, and truly, our children have lost an entire year of school. I think especially our second and third graders, we need to make sure that they are reading and writing and, and getting them back on, on track to where they should be. So that's number one. I think we need to look at our finances. You know, I've heard a lot that, that we've got, you know, a comparable tax rate to the rest of the state, but I think people need to remember that the average home in Lake Forest is, is valued a lot higher than, than the rest of the state. So I think we need to fiscally look at where we're spending our money and make sure that we're prioritizing it so that we're putting together programs that are actually going to help our children.
Thank you. Anne Garrity Helms.
So as I said at the outset, I have three priorities. First, obviously, is to get our kids back into a school into, in a smart, safe way. The second is to look at the data around any sort of learning loss that we've had in the past year and also social, emotional loss. And what I mean by that is that our kids, even when they've been in school, haven't had opportunities to play and interact as they would in a normal year, which is so incredibly important for their development, whether they're in second grade or eighth grade. And then finally, we have this wonderful opportunity to hire and implement a new superintendent in a way that is beneficial for our community. So I think we need to really spend the summer planning and being ready to get back into our schools and, and grow our community so we can move forward.
Thank you. Carl Kirar.
Yes, thank you. My focus areas are going to include academic growth for all the students, trust and transparency of district actions and decisions, and fiscal responsibility focused on the most effective use of taxpayer funds. Start with academic growth. I think we really need to balance our academic achievement with social, emotional health, and this can only occur when there is trust built between parents, teachers, and students. So we need to refocus our efforts on our children's ability to learn so they can regain and overcome the academic, excuse me, the academic losses of this, this year. Trust and transparency is the next item. And in the past year, I've seen how a lack of information and transparency impacts the small community, especially during a time of crisis. We need to be more open and inclusive while working through these wicked problems. This is why I completely support the newly formed committee of parents and staff. Tapping into local talent is a key to reopening our schools and really improving the education of all our schools. Last item is fiscal responsibility, which is an essential task of all school board members. We must all balance efficient budgeting with operational. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Levert.
Hi. So our children and their education are the number one priority for all of us, getting our children through this unprecedented school year and providing a robust summer school program to help them catch up, followed, of course, by the good news that we'll have full-time in-person learning in the 2021-2022 school year. In addition to that, selecting new superintendent and onboarding them is so important. They need to be strong and provide transparent leadership and excellent communication and reflect the needs of our community. And number three, getting back to a sense of normalcy and stability. Those are my three priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Bernal.
Hi, thank you. I mean, not, my, I guess my priorities aren't very different from a lot of the candidates you've heard today. I mean, with reopening, I mean, fortunately, we've received a plan finally from the superintendent. So that's exciting that hopefully we will get the kids back this year. I think with that, though, I think there's a lot of next steps because the work doesn't stop once we have that opening plan. We've heard about the superintendent. Certainly, we're going to be in a transitional period between an interim and possibly a permanent superintendent to make sure that transition is smooth. And certainly, the educational loss of instructional time. How does that look in terms of these, our students? Is it, you know, picked up via summer school? And what if the children do not, do not want to or are able to attend summer school? How can we address that in the fall? What options do parents have if they don't feel that they're comfortable sending their kids to the next grade? And certainly, like most candidates said, really fiscal responsibility. I think we're going to have to go back and look at our capital improvement budgets and projects and see where, where we, you know, kind of lie. The pandemic really kind of made us pivot quite a bit. So those are my priorities.
Lori Fitzgerald, what is your position on the elimination of levels? For instance, Quest and Explore in D67?
Did you say elimination? I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I, I do not believe that detracking achieves equity in our classrooms. You know, I equate this to when you break through the glass ceiling. You don't try to pull everybody back down underneath. You break the glass ceiling and you reach your arm out and you grab people and you pull them up with you. I believe equity in the classroom can actually be achieved through technology. Another example, my, my daughter is in a photography class and she needed access to software. I downloaded it on my home computer and she was off and running. There are students out there that, that, you know, their parents might not have a home computer. They might not even have Wi-Fi. We can use technology to stand up infrastructure and deploy virtual desktops that would allow students to take their school-issued Chromebook and actually access that software virtually at the school. So I think we need to look at other ways to, to achieve equity in the classroom, and I do not believe that eliminating honors classes is the way to do it.
Anne Garrity Helms, same question.
Differentiated learning is so incredibly important for all of our, our learners. And as a board member, I think what we need to do is look at the experts who are in charge of the school, ask them tough questions, and make decisions about what's best for our children. In terms of the best way to do it, I think as a board member, I, I am not currently on the board and I haven't studied these issues. And so what I need to do is really dive deep, understand them, talk to people, ask questions, and come up with a responsive plan.
Thank you. Carl Kirar.
Yes, thank you. I believe measuring student achievement is really dependent on each student's individual goals, which goes beyond test scores and grades sometimes. And this past year's place a really incredible amount of stress on our children and has led to the impacted ability to learn at all levels. The schools continue to measure and track their test scores and establish educational standards, but one thing that really isn't measured is the social, emotional health of the students, which impacts everything they do. And I believe the parents are really the only ones who are truly qualified to measure how their children are able to learn and prosper in their, in our current environment. So in order to really fully measure student success and their placement in these, these particular courses or their ability to take those courses, we must balance the academic achievement with the social, emotional health. As we move towards reopening our schools with more in-person opportunities, I think we need to refocus our efforts on our children's ability to learn so they can regain and continue to overcome some of these shortfalls and losses over the past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Levert.
Hi. So differentiated learning is important, and it's important because each student has their own journey. It's a partnership between the student, their parents, and their teachers. So communication is key to making them achieve success both academically, socially, and emotionally. And so with that in mind, it is important that there is flexibility, room for change, and room for growth. And I believe that the models in place through the District 67 schools are excellent. They're reviewed regularly by people who are experts in their field, and I know they do so to keep the students at the forefront of what is best for them, their journey, and their success.
Thank you. Emily Bernal.
Sure. Well, personally, I have two very different learners at home, and so my children's success looks very different just from as siblings. So to be honest with you, you know, students and their parents really should define their educational roadmap for this, for success. Our district should continue to provide learning opportunities, support, guidance, options, and resources to help shape this plan and equip the students to navigate their educational journey. You know, whether this is through specific classes or course offerings or assignments or projects. I mean, I believe this type of engagement and experience will, you know, ensure the students have the tools to complete their academic and personal goals.
Thank you. Taylor Cotten. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. That's a common theme for me. I believe we meet the students where, where, where they are. One thing that somewhat bothers me is that the decision was made at this, with a stroke of a pen to get rid of all the honors courses. Whereas in Highland Park, it was actually put to a vote and they voted it down. And the reason why is because it's not popular with, with the parents. We need to listen to them. Every child is unique. Some children are going to be able to read a chapter ahead. Other students are going to need more help. I've had kids on both ends of the spectrum. So I think what we need to do is prioritize learning, which is customized for the students, instead of trying to make people all fit into a one-size-fits-all box.
Thank you. Describe additional student support services that the district should make available as a result of the stresses arising from uncertainty and disruption from the pandemic. And this goes first to Anne Garrity Helms.
Thank you. Well, I think we all know that it's been a hard year. I am a mother. I've been at home with my kids. I've seen them struggle. They've seen me struggle. And so we obviously have a lot of work to do to get back to normal. And, and also as a parent, I think we can't underestimate what it means for a child to have a year of their entire life that, where they don't get to interact normally with other children. So what are we going to do about that? I think rather than focusing on kind of formal SEL programs in schools, which I know that the administration is working really hard to do right now, we need to work on building some normalcy into kids' lives, offering them those supports, but also building normalcy, offering clubs. And I'm starting to see that at DPM, and I think it's been wonderful. My son, for example, is participating in debate club, and it just brings such joy to be able to interact outside of a formal school setting. So yeah, I, thank you.
Carl Kirar.
So I think the most pressing issue we have as a board is really reopening our schools and getting back to as normal a school year as possible. That includes all of the other social aspects that come with the school. My daughters were very engaged with the, the after-school programs, and whether it's drama or the sports or what have you, and those are hugely important in their lives and to their social, emotional growth within, with their peers and within the schools. So I believe that step one is get our, get our schools open so they can participate in those certain activities and they can continue growing. And step two is to make a robot, more robust program so that in the future, when we reach into the fall, that we not only get them back on track academically, but we make sure that we continue to have these different social aspects after-school programs up and running fully and completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Levert.
So it's been a tough year. We worked really hard this past year to provide education as well as social and emotional support to the children and the students, the families, and the community overall, just to, to support one another through this pandemic. Under these difficult circumstances, we've come up with two new education models that didn't exist last year, AVA and the hybrid model. We did this to allow parents to decide what is best for their children to get through this pandemic. With that in mind, I look forward to the fact that next year will be a full-time model and some normalcy will return. In the meantime, we've got summer school that is available and always resources through the district. If you simply talk to your teacher or school principal, they will absolutely reach out to help you and your student at any time. Thank you.
Emily Bernal.
Thank you. Sorry, I muted myself again. Well, not like, I guess my thoughts are very similar in that I think that reopening the schools is really a critical step here to really return to some normalcy. Certainly, kids, you know, by nature are really social creatures, and I think taking away that interaction with children is very difficult for them to understand and process. We've had to put, we've forced our kids into very adult situations with Google Meets and things like that that they've really struggled with at times. But there's certainly been some successes along this way, too. Like Alice had mentioned, there's certain learning models that we didn't have before that perhaps we can also implement going forward. I mean, certainly, I don't sit on the board now. I'm hoping to, you know, be elected, but I think it'd be an ongoing discussion with the group to see how we can effectively help the kids transition and transition to more and more normal day-to-day life.
Taylor Cotten.
For me, normal means that the kids are caught up to where they were, would have been had this not happened. We can't go back and change the, the facts about the pandemic, but we can spend extra time to actually get them caught up. What I would like to see is I would like to see some time spent prior to the end of the year to assess where our students are, whether it be by standardized testing or by one-on-one interviews with students, because there are some gaps. And before we open fully in the fall, I would like to sit down and make sure we understand where we're missing. Finally, as a lot of people mentioned, there are some positive aspects of not returning to normal. One is the fact that if we can use this crisis towards an opportunity, we should be able to foster more interaction with parents by Zoom or by Google Meets than we had before, and more parent, teacher-student consultation as well. So I don't 100% want to go back to the normal, but I do want to get them 100% caught up to where they should be.
Thank you. Lori Fitzgerald. Thank you. Lori Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I think first and foremost, we need to be patient with our students. I think each of them as individuals are, they'll slowly start to come out of their cocoons that they've been in for the past year. And I think we need to be flexible and patient and meet them, you know, when and where they're ready in the classroom. I also think that we need to redesign or think about redesigning the structure of the school day. I know I had two kids that one of them never ate lunch because he just wanted to be out on the playground and the other one never had time to play because she wanted to sit down and eat lunch. And I don't think we allow enough time in the school day, the way it's structured now, to give them that social, you know, the social interaction that they need. So I think we should look at that. I also think we should maybe look at some type of summer development for the kids that are around here, you know, getting together and having clubs that meet over the summertime. Not summer school, but you know, just a social, social emotional clubs to keep them and get them back into that groove.
Thank you. Carl Carrar. What short and long-term action will you support to lessen the financial impact of the pandemic?
Great question. Thank you. So based on the board's direction, the administration developed a hybrid and full remote plan to meet all the students' educational needs, or at least come as close as we could. A V A has been incredible of success. The feedback we've gotten from parents has been incredible, just all positive. The hybrid provided in-person learning while maintaining the social distancing measures as directed by the CDC, IDHP and Lake County Health Department, while ultimately not satisfying really anybody, it did continue to provide a good education for our kids. So short term is make sure that we take these, any actions necessary to get our kids back into school. Mitigation strategies are there, testing is being discussed. And we'll have to make sure we balance that against our other fiscal responsibilities and needs that we have, and that's going to be debated on Tuesday. Long term, I think we have a great opportunity in front of us. We have a new superintendent, new school board members. And all of them bring new ideas, goals, philosophies, really to the table. So now we can look at everything. We can review the service model. I guess a lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Levert.
Hi. So short term, we need to use all our resources and the federal funding that's been approved that will come our way as well. We need to cover the extra costs that are new for P P E, vaccinations, two school models, remote and hybrid, and and just many more expenses that came our way this year, extra personnel, for instance, to help make this school year work. Long term, we need to continue to push to keep our taxes local because our taxes are 90% of our funding. So that's really important that we keep those local, maintain our triple bond rating and provide financial oversight as board members to the district. One thing that we will require of the new superintendent is a strong fiscal strategic plan to help us do that.
Emily Bernau.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think with respects to short-term, long-term game plan with finances, I mean, because of the pandemic and because of so many pivots here and there to be able to address it and accommodate it accordingly, I think we're going to have to have some very careful oversight financially to go forward to certainly monitor how we move through the end of this and make sure that we are kind of fiscally on track. As well as I think as it's come up, there's certainly opportunities, you know, gun, the evaluation of the shared service model and how that looks in terms of long-term, short-term costs and what will ultimately benefit the students of the district. And then again, I think it's been said to the superintendent, certainly another opportunity to install someone with really good fiscal responsibility and good fiscal sense of how to manage finances in our district.
Taylor Caddam.
I think, I think the easy one is the tent that's in Deer Path right now. I think that would be like the first thing that we probably need to look at eliminating, right? Short term. Unless there is a plan, which is, which I haven't seen, which incorporates that. But I think waste in general must be found and rooted out. When we're talking about things longer term, we're talking about things like the administrator's salary, which is about, you know, well above the average of the of the region. Also, the average spend in both instructional and operational is about $33,000 a year, which is much higher than the average. 67% of property taxes go towards the schools. So there are some savings that we can do. And in fact, there was one school district in Naperville, which actually refunded a lot of the taxes, property taxes, because a lot of what was spent or what was supposed to be spent actually wasn't. So those are two things that we can look at.
Lori Fitzgerald.
Yeah. So I think, you know, obviously, short-term, we need to, we need to do what's best for our kids and getting them back on track. Long-term, I think, you know, when you think about District 67, you know, the two highlights that come out are we're a AAA bond-rated school and we've got a great music program. What about our STEM program? What about our, you know, what about science and math and English and literature? You know, we imposed a tax levy in 2019 and that was the justification that, you know, our tax base is comparable, but yet the value of our homes is so much higher. So I think we really need to take a hard look at some of the administrative costs, the shared service model. Is that really truly servicing us or are we just, you know, beefing up our administrators? And is that an opportunity for us to get a little bit more efficient? In my business, we always look at a T C O and we always look at a business outcome. And if the business outcome doesn't support the T C O, then we don't do the project. So that's what I think we need to do.
Anne Garrity Holmes.
I think the good news is that the current administration had us in a strong financial position at the beginning of the pandemic and that served us very well. We have a AAA bond rating. We have administrators who have been good financial stewards. And I think it's incredibly important for the board to be vigilant in the coming years to make sure that we stay that way. I think Alice's point was excellent that we have a new superintendent coming on board and we need to be asking that superintendent to be prepared with a strong financial plan for getting us through this pandemic. And I'll just say finally, in terms of our tax rates, and I'm a taxpayer, so I understand that when my family moved here, we looked at the New Tree School District. And one of the things that did bring us to Lake Forest was the lower tax rate. Excellent schools, but the taxes were lower.
Alice Levert. Comment on diversity in the context of District 67.
So hi, regarding diversity in District 67, it's really important that our schools are inclusive and that children come to school excited and safe to be there. One thing the District 67 is extremely strong in is inclusion in the classroom. They have invested a lot to bring children with different needs together in the same classroom with co-teaching. We'd like to continue to expand that to be inclusive. And it's, it's just, it's taken off and done really, really, really well. It's also important that our schools are a safe place and that it's a safe place to discuss what's going on in our society today and make sure that children feel that they can do so without repercussions.
Emily Bernau.
With respects to diversity, I mean, I think for the most part, my experiences as a parent and with my two students, certainly specifically one of them having the special needs, he's been very welcomed and included, which has made a huge, huge impact on his self-esteem, was just being part of the regular class. I, you know, certainly think diversity in general, there's always areas of improvement. It's incredibly important to make sure that all students of the district feel included and welcome. We are a public school and so we want to make sure we're addressing the needs of all students of the district. But again, for the most part, I think diversity-wise is still an area that I see improvement over time.
Taylor Caddam.
When I think here about diversity, I think there's racial diversity, there is class diversity, there is diversity of thought. All of these are important. However, we must, you know, we live in the real world and we have the student body that we have. And in some ways, it's a very diverse student body. We have people from, you know, different parts of the country. I actually moved to Lake Forest for the diversity, which is the Chinese immersion program they actually had in Cherokee. So knowing that we have the student body that we have, we can teach them themselves to be curious and explore the world and see what's outside of their, of Lake Forest. That would go in the language program, that would go in the different assignments that they have. And it is, to me, more of a state of mind than actually just looking at, you know, just how we, how we look one towards another or what we think towards one towards another. So that's, that's what I think.
Lori Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I, I think we have a long way to go when it comes to racial diversity in our school, in our classroom. I personally, I don't know what it feels like to be a minority in a Lake Forest classroom. I know what it feels like to be the only woman in a conference room filled with men. And no matter how welcoming they are to you, you still feel hostile. It's intimidating and it is impossible to put forward your best work. So I think we need to, as a community, we need to work on bringing more diversity into our community. We need to work on bringing more diversity into our teacher ranks and making our children feel safe at school.
Anne Garrity Holmes.
I think the goal of our school district or one of the goals is to create successful, well-rounded children. And it's really not possible to function in the adult world these days and the business community these days without having a deep understanding and appreciation of diversity in every form. I think what actually makes the current board of District 67 strong is some of their diversity of viewpoints, for example. We hear from people who come with different skill sets, different backgrounds. And I think that's a, it's a great example of how adults in a diverse setting can really add up to more than the sum of its parts. So it's incredibly important, it's incredibly important that we teach it in an age-appropriate level and that it be part of everything we do at school.
Carol Carrar.
I'm actually very proud of our school's inclusivity and continued focus on educating our diverse children and families. They've done a very good job of that, but I think we can do more and we should do more to expand not only educational programs, but to discuss both the past and recent events. And this is really to continue to ensure all of our students are prepared to be the future leaders in a continually diverse and inclusive word, excuse me, inclusive world.
Thank you. Emily Bernau, what are the most important skills that you will bring to your role as a school board member?
Oh, thank you. That's a great question. I mean, I think, skill-wise, for any effective board member, I think communication is critical, both written and spoken. I mean, I think collaboration and being a team player are other two very important skills. I mean, we are, I'm one voice. There's seven people I need to work with. And so we all have to be respectful. We may not always agree. But at the end of the day, our end game is the kids of this district. So I think that's another critical portion of the attributes a board member should have. And, you know, really, at the end of the day, being an avid problem solver, most of my day-to-day, I don't have time to wait for people to give me an excuse on what's happened. I got to think next steps, long-term, fix it, get it done so that I don't miss a grand opening date of one of my jobs. So at the end of the day, I think that my multitasking, being flexible, being able to really assess my audience and effectively communicate with that audience because it changes with each given step of my projects and communicate those project needs is really, I think, a unique attribute that I bring to this.
Thank you. Taylor Caddam.
First, the most important thing that I bring to the board is something that everybody here shares and that's being a parent, right? So I've seen my parents, my children struggle. On a, on a professional level, I, as an auditor, I look at processes and then I look at risks within those processes and controls around those risks. So what I do is I try to find ways where things could go off the rail, we could have problems, both financially and operationally. And so that's ability to look at problems and be able to say, okay, where is the risk here? You know, kind of do a flow chart of who does what to whom. And then actually go about and do the hard negotiating to actually solve those problems.
Thank you. Lori Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I think anybody who knows me well, my family especially, knows that I always tell you what's on my mind. So I think transparency right now is really lacking. I think the community members are feeling that. And, and one of my strengths is transparency. You always know where I stand on an issue. And I'm always going to tell it to you straight regardless of whether I think you're going to like what I, what I have to say. So, so that's number one. I think number two is my ability to pull together groups of people that have various backgrounds and different viewpoints and, and find that common goal. Sometimes it's a little bit harder to find the common goal, but, but once you do, you start to work, work out from there. You get everybody agreeing and you work out and leveraging each individual's strength so that you can have overall success for the team.
Thank you. Anne Garrity Holmes.
One thing I've seen in the past few months, as I've learned more and more about the board, is about the necessity to have a deep curiosity for what's happening with the board, whether it be fiscally, curriculum-wise, what's going on with state laws and to work really hard. Our schools are the most precious resource in our community and if we want to do this right, we have to put in the hard work. So those are two things that I think I can bring to the board. I also think board, good board members are good listeners. They take into account different viewpoints, they process them, they may not always agree with them, but they really do the hard thinking. And then finally, setting high expectations, having a good relationship with, but setting high expectations for administrators of the schools and in particular the superintendent. And then holding the superintendent to those high expectations, I think is a critical role of a board member.
Carol Carrar.
Yeah, so I guess I like to be known as a level-headed and practical person. I think that comes with being an engineer. But primarily, I think what I can bring to the board is my experience throughout my professional career. Serving over 20 years in the Navy and then coming over to the local government here at Lake County. Each one of those positions is through all different levels. Budgeting was a critical item to always look at and to prioritize on looking at critical activities versus the budget that we have in front of us. And it's really there to protect the taxpayer. So every item that we'd ever bring up must have a purpose and must be defended or just won't get funded. And then I think this applies directly to the school board. We need to critically analyze any and all programs, expenses, personnel and all that with a focus on one thing and that's the student success. And that goes for now and to the future.
Alice Levert.
Hi. So it's really important that I bring integrity, transparency and communication as a board member. You know, we represent the community and we should reflect the community. It's important to make decisions based on facts and not emotions because it's really important to understand the depth of what you're, you're making choices on behalf of the community and the schools and of course our students. That being said, it's also important to bring fiscal oversight to the board because we need to make sure that we represent, again, the entire community and how we spend money and how we advocate for not only the children in school, but for Lake Forest as well. There should be no personal agenda, no political agenda, and I feel very strongly about that. And you have to be willing to give a great deal of your time. So that's, that's all good.
Thank you. So it's time for closing statements and we're going to reverse the order that we did of the opening statements. So we're going to start with Alice Levert.
Hey, well, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all those who joined us today. We very much appreciate the time. You know, it's been a really tough year, but we will get through it and we'll get through it by working together and supporting one another. The good news is our schools are open and they will continue to get back to normal. We have accomplished a lot in the last four years while I've been on the board, but of course, there's always more to do. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the District 67 Board. And one of the reasons I'm seeking reelection is to provide stability and be a bridge between the current board and the future board as we look to do great things in the coming years ahead. I'm Alice Levert. I'm number five on. I'm Alice Levert. I'm number five on the ballot, and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Carol Carrar.
Thank you to the League of Women, excuse me. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us all today. I really appreciate that. When I volunteered and was later selected to fill the vacated board position, I, I wanted to give back to the community that really has given me and my family so much. My girls' teachers made such an incredibly positive impression on me that I wanted to give back and support District 67 in any way I could. But to be honest, this year has been incredibly challenging. My day job with the county is focused on opening and sustaining our buildings throughout the pandemic, which continues daily. We thrust these huge adult expectations onto my daughters with little to no warning. My wife and I have played the dual role of parent and school proctor, like all, like many of you have. And I've spent an incredible amount of time as a board member, first while working through the pandemic, then discussing and working through a new union collective bargaining agreement, and now working through a superintendent leaving for a job right down the road. Whys and Tigers and Bears, oh my, it's been, it's been, it's been tough. But I feel very blessed. My family is safe and healthy. We've been able to continue our professional careers, and my children have continued to grow and learn. So I still want to get back to the school district and repay this community for as much as it has provided my family. Thank you all for the chance to meet with you today. My name's Carl Carrar, and I truly appreciate your vote. I'm number three on the ballot.
Thank you. Anne Garrity Holmes.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event today. I'd also like to thank the Lake Forest Boris Caucus and my fellow candidates. They are all working incredibly hard as volunteers to serve this community in a thoughtful and nonpartisan way. I also applaud our current school board, our teachers and the administration for the courage and commitment that they've shown over, over the past year, which has been the toughest year our schools have ever faced. I know it has not been perfect or easy, and we have room for improvement, especially in the area of transparency. But what I see in this group of people is dedication, thoughtfulness and an honest commitment to doing the right thing. And that gives me great hope for the future. Two final points. First, I myself am a taxpayer in this community, and I know that fiscal responsibility is what makes our schools strong and our town an attractive place to, to live. And I can assure you that I will take that responsibility very seriously. And finally, I believe that this election should be about children and schools, not about political agendas or soundbites. At this critical time in particular, it's irresponsible to focus on anything else besides moving all of us out of crisis mode and into a better future. I'm Annie Helms. I'm number two on the ballot, and I appreciate your vote. Thanks.
Lori Fitzgerald.
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for putting this together. It was, it was a lot of fun. So thank you for that. I, I just want to say, I think, you know, we have a very special community here and our kids are our future. It's evident that we have a lot of passionate residents, and clearly, it's been a very difficult year for everybody. We do need to put our political biases aside, and I think when we do, we will all discover that we agree on a lot more things than we disagree on. It's important now, more than ever, that we come together and that we work towards the betterment of our schools. If I'm elected, I promise to make transparency a priority and to help ease the tensions with the community members. I also promise to focus on our children and not just put political agendas into our schools because we need to check a cultural box. We need to do what's best for our kids at this time to support their social, emotional wellbeing as well as their academic achievement. I would be honored to represent our students, and I ask for your vote on April 6th. I'm number six on the ballot. Six. Thank you for the opportunity to participate, and I hope to have the opportunity to serve the community and District 67.
Thank you. Tyler Caddam, your closing statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this event, especially Mary Ellen, who put in a lot of diligent time. Thank you to the city and the school districts, including all the teachers and members of this caucus who have put in so many efforts to provide an effective model of good governance. I appreciate it, I really do, and I look forward to working with two of you on the school board. Finally, educating my children is my responsibility. I've had my kids in public schools, private schools and homeschool. I take education seriously. I teach my children that there are three things they need to succeed in life: education, hard work and integrity. I believe that every other parent has the same responsibility. It is because of this that I take any trust afforded to me with great humility and honor. And so I would like to say thank you to everyone, including everyone on the caucus and the League of Women Voters. We are number four and number six. Number four is Caddam, number six is Fitz. Four and six, Caddam and Fitz. Thank you.
And Emily Burnell, your closing statement.
Sure. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for organizing today's event and for the opportunity to speak to the community. As I reflect on the past year, I remind myself why I started this journey out of a sincere and genuine interest in public education. I don't view my pursuits into public service as what type of legacy I want to leave behind or what I will receive when my time concludes. This quite simply is my way of helping the community. No agenda, no politics, just me giving back. From the start of this process, I've always viewed this as an opportunity to contribute my unique talents while collaborating and working as a team with the other members of the board. More importantly, contributing to a board that has similar and equal interest in the success of all the students of the district. At the end of the day, it's about the children of our district. I want to close by saying no one will dispute this has been an exceedingly difficult and trying year for our students, our families and community. However, I think there are tremendous opportunities for improvement and growth as we return to normalcy. The role of a school board is a partnership with the community it serves. It's my intent and hope as a member to create opportunities for public engagement, improve transparency and communication, to be an advocate for all students, a champion of our schools and a steward of our community. I'm Emily Burnell, number one on the ballot, and I'm asking for your vote on April 6th, if not before. Thank you for your time and consideration in listening today.
Thank you. Our time is up for this forum. For more information, please visit the nonpartisan website, illinoisvoterguide.org, the candidates' websites, as well as the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area website. When you do visit the League of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area website, you can sign up for the Lake Bluff Non-School Board Race Candidate Forums, which will be held on Thursday. And we appreciate your participation, whether you are a candidate or a voter. It's essential to preserve our freedom in our country. Please remember to vote whether it's vote by mail, early voting, or on Election Day, April 6th. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.